Good evening and welcome to the first of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Sanitation meeting for Monday, August the 4th, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to begin or to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board. You have been presented the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, July 21st, 2014. The floor is open for questions or comments or corrections.
Well, Mayor, after reviewing the minutes of July 21st, I see no problem with them.
And I was absent, so...
No change, corrections, or questions? I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
And I will second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Move on to wastewater claims dated August the 4th, 2014. Board, you have four pages of claims in the amount of $217,647.20. The floor is open for questions or comments.
I do have a question, please, on page three. Pace Analytical Services Incorporated for $510. And they did analyzing Lick Creek.
That's probably where they're testing the creek.
Yeah. Our MS4 permit that we have mandates that we do stormwater sampling, usually dry weather sampling and wet weather sampling once or twice a year. So, we do that.
Thank you.
The case, that's who actually tests the water. We have a kit that we fill up and send it to them, and they have all the laboratory stuff to test it.
They analyze it. Okay, thanks, Brad.
Yeah, no problem. Then they send us the results, and we publish those in our annual report.
Okay, thanks.
If you go above that, the second one from the top, Kohli Contracting, $77,229, that was for the Belle Fontaine project between 8th and 9th. And that is actually $5,000 less than what they thought. So, that project is complete, and now we're getting ready to pay it. And then the very back page, the very last one, is $84,330. And that's an annual payment, isn't it, Dan? To Citizens Energy for updates to the South Port Wastewater Treatment Center.
I think when we first came into office, that was like $59,000, and it's up to $84,000. It goes so many years, and then it will start dropping, start dropping again.
So, we have two big claims on this, or it would have been a relatively normal pay cycle. Any other questions or comments from Board members?
I have none.
If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the wastewater claims in the amount of $217,647.20.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. That concludes the claims. We have no unfinished business or new business to bring forward this evening. So, comments from Board members?
I have none tonight.
I have none.
If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:04 PM. We are scheduled to meet again on Monday, August 18th, 2014, at 6:00 PM. We are adjourned, and Board of Works will start in five minutes. Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the second of three meetings tonight. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of the City of Beach Grove. And at this time, we will convene our Board of Public Works and Safety meeting for Monday, August the 4th, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my far right.
Ed Bell.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasurer.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Sandy Seward.
Thank you, Board members. You have been presented a printed copy of the minutes of the previous meeting dated Monday, July the 21st, 2014. At this time, the floor is open for questions, comments, or corrections.
I finally found it. On page 25...
Wait a minute, we're on the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. I'm looking both. I have no problem with the minutes for the 21st. I read them and have no problem.
If there's no comments or corrections, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make said motion.
I second, second the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Move on to approval of claims. Board, this evening, you have 31 pages of claims dated August the 4th, 2014, in the amount of $797,161.99. The floor is open for questions or comments.
All right. On page 25, just a quick question. I haven't really seen all this before. Everything is being listed individually, like the Google accounts. Are these monthly or yearly or...
Google is yearly. One is for the Google email, and there's actually two of them. And the second one is for Google archiving, because we were not compliant with state statute with what we were doing as far as storing emails. Our server would only hold six months. This cloud will hold 10 years.
Okay.
I have a question, please. On page three, there are four amounts for Woodworks Landscape. And they're pretty costly. One's $2,300, the other one's $2180. Underwater feature, park, underwater spray.
I'm not 100% sure on this. I think what this might be is something to do with the fountain in the park that they redid, and I believe that's what this is actually for. Tom, in here, so I'm not sure, but I think that's what it was.
Thank you. On page 29, I see we bought a new leaf machine, very much needed. I think we had some complaints, what, two years ago, that the old one was broke or not working, so it's good to see we got a new one.
I think we've also got a second one in the budget for next year also, so that's good news.
I have no further questions.
There's a bill in here for an attorney. Can you explain that?
What page you on and which one?
I don't have it in front of me. I was notified before the meeting.
Middle way is down.
That would happen to be my attorney that I've contracted with for representing the Clerk Treasurer's office in a lawsuit that was brought up.
What's the date of the invoice?
I don't have that in front of me.
Because the lawsuit wasn't filed until Wednesday. I'm just curious how there's been $2,500 spent on an attorney when a lawsuit was filed on Wednesday.
This is not directly in regards to the lawsuit. This is for the investigation that the City Council has spent $10,000 on.
And that you're spending additional $2,500 on, in which you're under no legal jeopardy. Before any legal invoices are paid by the taxpayers, as a chief legal officer, I want to see what they are. My recommendation would be to table paying this till I have a chance to inspect the invoices, and we can bring it up at the next meeting.
Well, under my professional services, I'm allowed to retain attorney.
Okay, that's my recommendation, Board.
I have one on page 29. Major Enterprises, that is for curbed sidewalks, $10,483.87. I know Brad turned it in, but I wanted to make sure that he had two quotes on there.
I attached copies of both quotes.
Okay.
One from Hoffman and one from Major.
Okay. Then I think that was it. There's quite a bit on here. We're quite busy.
On the same page, 29, Leads Online, about middle way is down.
I believe that's Mark's for a program they belong to where people can call in and turn information in.
Which one is it?
It's a program we use to gather information, or detectives use it to gather information on different people.
What's the name of the pay, Ed?
Leads Online.
Leads Online, thank you.
About the middle of the page.
Do all these, Dan, do all these legal bills come out of the same pot?
No, they do not. Mine come out of the Clerk Treasurer's professional. The City Council, they're going to have to tell me where they want theirs to come out of. Craig does work for the City Council, plus he does work for the court. So, no, there's a conglomerate of areas these come out of.
Does Board members have any other questions or comments?
I do. Dan, okay, so you had this done. I mean, just for like my knowledge, could you have used Craig to get information or to get guidance from Craig?
And my estimation, the answer is definitely not. No, I could not have.
One thing I'm concerned about, Board, is if his, the attorney he's retained, is providing counsel on sewage works matters, Main Street loan matters, anything like that, that's purely a city legal issue. And that's why I think I'm entitled to inspect the invoices before anything's paid.
What, I don't know where you're coming from with that information. What did she charge for sewage or anything else?
No, I'm just saying, I don't want to set a bad precedent here where she's performing duties that are purely city legal in nature. That's why I think I'm entitled to inspect the invoice.
And she's not. She's doing duties clearly under the investigation that was started by the City Council and yourself.
Are those, not, no, it wasn't myself. Are those expenses budgeted?
Don't have to be. And yes, they are, because they come out of my professional services.
Okay, all right. Well, my recommendation is, is that you want to pay everything fine, but with that, it's a territorial thing, folks. I don't want to set a bad precedent. If that's the case, we can bring it up at the next meeting to see what those expenses are being paid for. It's for an investigation which he was clearly under no legal jeopardy, and the taxpayers think it's okay for him to pay for it, that's fine.
Any comments from Board members?
Can we table that until it's kind of discussed a little further?
Here's what I think I might recommend that the Board does. I would, may recommend to the Board that they go ahead and approve these corporate claims in the amount of $797,161.99. And then however many invoices are generated from Dan's representation would be reviewed, and then upon consultation with the, with the city attorney, they'd be paid. He's asking to see him, and they're on the docket, so I want to address him.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Move on to unfinished business, carried over from the previous meeting. We have none. This evening, we have several items of new business. The first is a step increase for the fire department. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. I come before you today to ask for approval of the pay increase of Leah Barnes to the position of third-year civilian paramedic. Leah has completed her second year. If approved, Leah's pay will increase to $1,945.75 per pay period. This will take effect August 7th, 2014. The increase for the position pays in our 2014 budget.
Floor is open for questions or comments?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the pay increase for Leah Barnes, effective August 7th, 2014.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Chief, you have one more?
Yes, Mayor and Board, I come before you today to ask for the approval of the pay increase of Ryan Madigan to the position of third-year firefighter. Ryan has completed his second year. If approved, Ryan's pay will increase to $2,157.19 per pay period. This will take effect August 7th, 2014. The increase for this position pays in our 2014 budget.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a recommendation to approve the chief's recommendation for Ryan Madigan to be increased third-year firefighter.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Move on to a request for a block party. Dan?
The residents of the 100 block of North 3rd Avenue are seeking permission to close off North 3rd Avenue from Albany to Bethel on Saturday, August the 9th, for a block party from noon until 4:00 PM. We want to celebrate and share with each other the improvements and future hopes of all our neighbors. Attach as a copy of the invitation we will be sending out. Upon approval, I would appreciate you forwarding this invitation to the Mayor and other community leaders. Tom Wade.
Comments or questions from Board members?
Do you have any safety concerns from police or fire?
And I see no problem.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the request.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a request for Fall Festival Parade and Fall Festival from the Promoters Club. Derek, did you want to comment on this? If not, I'll ask the clerk to read the letter and into the record.
Dear Board of Public Works and Safety, the Beach Grove Promoters Club recently purchased several Motorola... Wait a second, this is... Beach Grove Promoters Club Board members, the Beach Grove Promoters Club requests permission to present two of our annual events, the Fall Festival and the Festival Parade on the streets of the city. The festival dates will be Wednesday, September 10th through Saturday, September 13th, with setup to be Tuesday, September 9th, 2014. The street closings we are requesting are Tuesday, Main Street from 3rd to 7th Avenue and 4th, 5th, and 6th avenues from Main Street to the alleys, both north and south, from 5:00 PM until setup is complete. Main Street will be open to traffic during business hours, but 4th and 5th will be permanently closed. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, the above-listed streets from 6:00 PM until 11:00 PM. Saturday, the above-listed streets from noon until 11:00 PM. In addition, Main Street between 2nd and 3rd avenues from noon until 6:00 PM, and Main Street between 6th and 7th avenues from 6:00 AM until 11:00 PM. For the parade, we request Main Street from 17th to 8th avenues for the parade route starting at noon, and Main Street from 17th to 25th avenues for the parade lineup starting at 10:00 AM. The carnival rides will again be contracted to Porjack Amusements, and proper certificates of insurance will be provided prior to setup. In past years, we have experienced excellent support from the Police, Fire, and Street Department, and looking forward to that relationship again this year. Respectfully, John Cirello.
Floor is open for questions or comments?
Again, if police and fire have any concerns? No?
And they have their, I think they have their certificate of insurance on file, don't they?
I believe so.
With the, when they had that fireworks show.
Right.
If there's not any other questions or comments, I'll ask for a motion to approve the festival from Tuesday, the 9th of September, through Saturday, September the 13th.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Now, also, I'll ask for a motion to approve the parade on Saturday, the 13th of September, from 17th to 8th Street.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye, and the motion carries. Next, we have a request from the Promoters Club to use a frequency generally used by the Department of Public Works. Derek?
We were lucky enough over the past few weeks to acquire a dozen Motorola MT2000 VHF handheld radios. In the past, we've rented radios at the cost of about $500 per event. We were able to get all these, all the equipment necessary, for about $400 total, which is a great savings to us. The only problem was, these radios need a FCC licensed frequency in order to operate. The process for getting a frequency is relatively lengthy and expensive. We would have to retain a corporation to go through a planning service to, in order to find a frequency for us. Given we only have two events a year that last only a couple days, we would prefer to use that money elsewhere in the city, and therefore, we'd like to request that we can use DPW's frequency, which is 156.000 megahertz in the evenings. Talked to Department Director Brad. He had no issue with it, and we just requested the Board let us use this frequency on those two events in the evenings, so that we can help serve the community and save us some money. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Floor is open for questions or comments.
As long as Brad's okay with it.
Well, the only question I have is if it's okay to be able to use the license other than DPW. Is there any real stating that, do you know of?
Yeah, I have no idea.
Okay. I don't really have any problem, as long as we don't have any stumbling block like that.
Why don't we go ahead, and I'll ask for a motion to approve the Promoters Club using the Department of Public Works frequency from the time period, September the 9th through the 13th, for the festival.
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I also vote aye, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
We have one more order of new business, and that is a request to hire a crossing guard within the Police Department Chief.
Mayor and Board, I'm requesting to hire Colleen Treat as a crossing guard. Mrs. Treat will be used as a fill-in crossing guard. She'll only be working and paid when a full-time crossing guard is not working.
Questions from Board, or comments from Board members?
None.
I got a couple of questions. What's the hourly rate she will be receiving?
$15 an hour.
Okay. And who oversees the crossing guards?
It's Lieutenant Treat.
Okay. Under the nepotism, I don't think that would pass, because you cannot have a spouse in the direct line of overseeing her duties.
I don't know. She's getting paid not through the Police Department and not by him. She's, all crossing guards are paid through the MVH.
But he's still her direct supervisor, and that's where the nepotism comes in.
Is there anybody else that would supervise her besides Lieutenant Treat?
We could probably have a full-time crossing guard that is senior that would supervise.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, yeah, we're going to pay her $15 per hour. That's as effective the first of this year, any new crossing guard. But I would ask for a motion to approve this, provided that there's no conflict on her supervision. If her husband supervises her, then she would not be able to do this work.
Normally, the crossing guards supervise themselves, and they work among themselves. The Police Department is only involved for, I don't know what reason. We do not replace a crossing guard unless one can't be, and then we assign an officer. But we don't truly supervise other than assign where a crossing guard needs to be.
I think the nepotism statute says that you can't hire a spouse not supervise. I think that's two different issues, but I'm not saying what the Mayor's recommendation shouldn't be, but I think those are two different issues here.
So, what's your recommendation?
Well, I think it makes some sense that she be supervised by somebody other than her husband, but that's not nepotism. Nepotism, nepotism, when you hire a person, that's what the statute says.
It also states direct line of command.
In my, how this operates, he's not her normally indirect line of command. All the crossing guards talk among themselves and get somebody to replace them. All she would be doing is giving the other crossing guards a name to come into. They turn their timesheets in to somebody else. He doesn't handle those. It's just his assignment to find people as this to work full-time or fill-ins.
You're doing the hiring, though, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I do all hiring and discipline.
So, Craig, what would you recommend we do?
Well, I mean, again, I don't think if there's a nepotism issue here. I think it's a line of supervision issue, and as long as, again, I don't see if there is a conflict, as long as she's not supervised by her husband, that does make some sense, so...
Board, I would recommend we hire, however... Board, I would recommend we hire, however, we have to note that she cannot be supervised by her spouse.
So let's just, let's just play it out. So if there was an issue, what would be the next step?
It comes to me.
Would come to you.
Yeah, directly to me. He might get notified, but it, for any discipline or any problems, it is my problem to deal with.
Okay.
He, he cannot discipline anybody.
Having said that, motion to approve the chief's request?
I'll make said motion.
And I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I also vote aye and the motion carries. That concludes new business. Comments from Board members?
I have none.
I have none.
If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
We are adjourned at six. Six. Thirty-two PM. We will meet again on Monday, or excuse me, Monday, August 18th. Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the third and final meeting this evening. My name is Dennis Buckley, Mayor of City of Beach Grove.
We will convene our city council meeting for Monday, August the 4th, 2014. In lieu of a roll call, I will ask each participant to introduce themselves, beginning on my left.
Dave Mobley, City Councilman at Large.
John Jennings, District Four.
Dave Harrison, District Five.
Dan McMillan, Clerk Treasor.
Craig Wiley, City Attorney.
Anthony Davidson, District Three.
Bell, District Two.
Kathy Coats and Mary Stewart are absent this evening. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a special presentation from Beautify Beach Grove. If those folks would come forward, please.
Hello, good evening. My name's Jim Kaufman, I live at 148 North Fifth.
And I'm Peggy Dolan, which I don't live in the Grove anymore.
We are with the Beautify Beach Grove Committee. We are a not-for-profit, 501(c)(3). Our main goals are to raise money and then supply things to beautify our city without costing the taxpayers any money. Last year, we donated the Christmas reset, went on Main Street. This year, we raised enough money, we purchased 75 flags. They will go from Ninth, on Ninth Avenue from Churchman down to Thompson Road, so hopefully Brad and the guys will be getting, will be out getting them up hopefully in the next week or two. We have a couple of events coming up.
Ah, we got our concert in the park, what is it, August 17th is the next one, so we'd like to see everyone there. August 17th.
Is what?
Concert in the park.
There's a group, about 20 or 25 of us that get together, we're at the concert, we'll have a booth where we sell food. We're at the July 3rd Promoters Club, let us come out and sell some food there. The Chamber lets us come out and sell some food, and we'll also be at the festival, and we also have our farmer's market. That happens every other Tuesday at the corner of Churchman and Emerson, in front of the Emporium. Next one will be a week from tomorrow, from 3 to 7.
That's your farm market?
Yes.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
I have been there.
Yeah, every other Tuesday, and again, the funds raised from that, from renting space, and the vendors that come out is, goes towards efforts like this, so.
Excellent.
We're working on a couple of new projects, hopefully, in next year or two, have some more coming towards the city, so we're letting you guys know when those come. That's it. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Counselor, you've been presented the copy of the minutes of the previous meeting, dated July the 7th. Floor is open for questions or corrections.
I have read and understand the Beach Grove City Council meeting minutes from July 7th, 2014. I motion we accept as written.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. Move on to public comments. Counselor?
Yes. First on the list is Darlene Stout. Stout, will you please state your address?
It's 2206 Main Street, Beach Grove.
Thank you.
I'm here in Doordance 12, which is putting a stop sign up at Main and Tyson. It is currently a two-way stop there, and we are petitioning to put a four-way stop to help slow the traffic down, make it easier for the buses to get the children on safely, let the people that's coming out of Tyson to get out onto Main Street safely, and as far as our other residents to be able to back out of our driveways without cars going so fast and whizzing around and ending up in our front yards because they can't control their speed. So I hope that you guys will agree to have our sign to see if we can get some of the speed stopped through there.
Thank you.
Connie Kelly. Good evening, Ms. Kelly, will you please state your address?
Hi, thank you for having me here. 404 Dangerfield Drive in South Park Village. Just wanted to bring forward a concern in our neighborhood. It's an over 55 community, and we have a chain-link fence across the north end of our property that backs up to the Walmart parking, well, the Walmart fence and the parking area. People are cutting through there and damaging the fence, not only our fence, but the Walmart chain-link fence, which is taller, and we would seek your cooperation to give us direction and to help us interact with and solicit the participation of Walmart to try and get something further done so that it's not so easy to cut through there. They currently have a, like a stone or a concrete wall that goes partially around the back into the property, but there's no ends to it, so there's just very open and people cut through there. We've had many instances, as a matter of fact, last winter, I called the police, there was a couple of young men that had rifles, whether they were pellet guns or real guns, I don't know, but they were cutting through there. There's been some activities that are inappropriate going on back in that, like green space, if you will. So if you could supply us with some direction, we'd certainly appreciate it.
What would you like for us to do?
Possibly if we could come up, you know, help us with a, with a crime watch program, possibly help us work with the appropriate people at Walmart to get additional fencing put on their property to make it less easy to cut through and to, you know, damage our fencing and such, or if you have other ideas, certainly we're open to that.
How worse is that?
It's on Dangerfield Drive. You get to, it's near Ninth, I'm sorry, it's between Ninth and Emerson, north of Thompson, through that single-family housing addition, and then back in there, you go on Yazoo Yazoo, and then Dangerfield, and there are paired patio homes. It's a small community, there's only 24 resident units.
No, I'm going to go down there tomorrow, I want to see it.
Okay, that would be great, and I would be happy to walk with you if you would like.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Kelly? If not, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your time.
That concludes the list to sign up to speak. Is there anybody who would like to speak that did not sign up? If not, we'll move to committee reports. The first one is Greenscape, Tim? The youth council will try and pick them up the next meeting.
Good evening. Tim Latimer, Beach Grove Greenscape Commission. Before I give the Greenscape report, Mayor Buckley is going to allow me a couple of minutes to thank some folks for July 3rd, and I, in the interest of time, I'm just going to read this, so I won't ramble the way some folks do when they get up here. The Beach Grove Promoters Club would like to thank several groups and individuals who helped make this year's All-American Day in the Park another great success. Once again, the Beach Grove Police and Fire Departments did an outstanding job of hurting traffic in and out of Beach Grove, making their presence known throughout the park and surrounding areas where hundreds of spectators parked, attending to medical emergencies, and keeping everyone safe. Thank you. Tom Hannan and all the guys in the Parks Department. A couple of hours after the show was over, several of us promoters were all leaving the park when we saw Tom Hannan and Josh Edwards picking up trash in the east end of the park, and they were back at the park come daylight. Brad Meriwether and the folks in the Department of Public Works, thanks for all the pre-event work and thanks for helping clean up after. By 9:30 AM, you would never have known there was an event the day before, and you know, it's like that every year, come around 9:30, 10 o'clock, we're out of there, the place is, is beautiful again. And thanks to Mayor Buckley, Dan McMillan, and Julie Lockwood for your support, for helping us get all the preliminary stuff done accurately and on time. The Beach Grove Promoters Club, thanks you all. Thank you. Okay, and now for the Greenscape report. The first item has to do with trees on Main Street. Several trees on Main Street that died over the winter will be replaced. Nineteen black tupulos will be replaced with New Harmony Elms, and 10 zelkovas will be replaced with zelkovas, per the Greenscape Commission recommendations. These trees are hardy, they don't attract insects, and they have small leaves that won't clog the storm sewers. We finished our hazardous tree report about three years ago. Davy Resources inspected our street trees and our park trees. They gave the Greenscape Commission and the Department of Public Works a list of trees that needed to be monitored due to their poor condition or potential poor condition. So this summer, we re-inspected all those trees that hadn't already been removed, and we made some recommendations to the DPW. Here's the summary. A total of 23 street trees and park trees, which includes Sarah Bolton Park and Don Chalice Park, have been removed. We recommended that three more trees be removed, one tree possibly be removed, and a total of 15 trees that need minor attention, such as low-hanging branches over the sidewalk or over the street. There are about 30 or so additional trees from the list that showed little or no change, and thus need no maintenance at this time. We gave this report and addresses to Brad. We would like to recommend everyone be aware of potential unscrupulous or uninformed tree trimmers. We suspect that some tree trimmers make recommendations that trees need to be removed due to the emerald ash borer. Although it is true that some ash trees are suffering from a disease, this does not necessarily mean they have been attacked by the EAB. We have inspected several trees in Beach Grove and have not found any emerald ash borers. We further recommend residents get an updated liability declaration page from the tree trimmer before they begin any work. In June, the Greenscape Commission was asked for advice regarding the deteriorating conditions of McFarland Park behind Park South and the Park South neighborhood, north and west of Wood Creek Apartments in the city's southeast corner. I talked with some residents there and viewed some pictures from past spring. Flooding, erosion, and overhanging trees encroaching upon the apartment complex are indeed a problem. I spoke with Mayor Buckley, and he advised me that the city is aware of the problems there and that I should inform the residents that this issue will be addressed sometime in the future. So if you go out there tomorrow to look at the fencing area on the north end, go to the south end, and you'll see the creek there, and you'll see what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, our annual Arbor, Arbor Day celebration will take place on Saturday morning, October 18th, at the Benedictine Center. An exact time and more specific details will come later, we're thinking probably around 10:30 or 11 o'clock in the morning, but that's not set in stone yet. And our next meeting will be Monday, the 18th, at 5 o'clock in the community center. As always, the public is invited to attend. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Jim.
Counsel, you have the RDC report. I don't think the Public Safety Committee met due to a funeral. Next report is financial from the clerk, Dan.
Dear counselors, our State Board of Accounts audit began on Monday, July the 28th, and we welcome them to the City of Beach Grove. We always enjoy having them here, and we always learn new things from them. They will also provide us with some tips to prepare for us for next year's federal audit and to improve our accounting procedures going forward. Tonight, we have on the agenda an additional appropriation for the local law enforcement fund. The LLE fund derives its revenues primarily from deferrals received from the city court. That LLE fund has an approximate balance of $42,500, but we only appropriated $14,000 for the 2014 budget year, so even though the money is in the fund, it cannot be spent without approval from the Department of Local Government Finance, hence the additional appropriation request. The month of July bond and lease payments included the RDC 2005 and 2007 TIP bonds auto deduct payments, which combined was $286,761.75. The 2012 bond auto deduct payment, which was $104,668.75, and the fire and police vehicles auto deduct lease payments, which were $27,011.55. We have been busy working on the budget, and I have emailed counselors and department heads my recommendation. As I stated in my email to the council, city department heads can appropriate within their budgets monies where they see fit. However, salaries, insurance, taxes, personal services, utilities, bond or lease payments cannot be modified from the amounts I have appropriated. The total amount of each budget cannot be increased, but you are welcome to cut the exception being MVH, which after review will increase to $834,767 from approximately $829,000. Revenue projections support the increase, but Mayor Buckley is suggesting keeping it at the $829,000, so I will wait for him and Brad's revised budget of MVH. I also emailed to counselors a letter which Mayor Buckley and I received in June from Jeff Peters, our financial advisor for the City of Beach Grove. Jeff cautioned us in that letter, and also at a June budget meeting, that the proposed 2015 budget exhausts the majority of revenue forecast for 2015. In attendance in that June budget meeting were Mayor Buckley, Counselor Bell, department heads, Jeff Peters, and myself. I have had several people ask me, if the city is in great financial shape, why can't we spend all the money? The answer is simple. We want to keep the city in good financial shape, and we cannot budget to spend more than the revenues will support. It is against state statute, the law, and when the DLGF reviews the budgets, they would not approve a budget that has more in expenditures than revenue. If that were to happen, we would have to revert to the previous year's budget. The budget needs to be advertised in two to three weeks, and I will submit the non-binding review to the City County Council by August 26th. So please, council and department heads, have your budgets to me by August the 15th. Council members, I have emailed you several times without any return reply regarding invoices you have due, but you do not have enough money remaining, the appropriations to fund. In the 2014 budget, there was an appropriation for professional services/attorney fees of $10,000, which was split between the two. Out of your budget, you pay American Legal Publishing Company to publish online your ordinances, which amounts to several thousand dollars each year. Then at the previous council meeting, this body voted and approved Professor Frank Norwicky approximately $1,700 for your portion of his services. Year-to-date, we do not have appropriated any attorney invoices to your budget for City Attorney Craig Wiley, as we just received his invoice in July for services rendered from December 2013 through May of 2014. You also have approximately $10,000 in attorney fees from Ogletree for the investigation of the Clerk Treasurer's Office. I spoke to Charlie Pride and the DLGF representative, and he suggested that an additional appropriation would be the answer for the council budget. I will estimate the amount needed for the remainder of the year and facilitate the preparation of the documentation if you are all in agreement of this. Also, if you anticipate a... Also, if you anticipate additional unusual expenditures for this year, please provide a dollar amount to be included in the additional appropriation. I will not do this until I am instructed to do so at a council meeting. Keep in mind, I will not present APVs to the Board of Works for approval of payment of any of these invoices until council has approved additional appropriation that will fund their budget. I also wish to let the citizens of Beach Grove know, this dirty political nonsense has in no way affected the office of the Clerk Treasurer when it comes to performing its duties and fulfilling the city's obligations. Kudos to the women who work in the office. The city is in good financial shape, and office hasn't skipped a beat in performing the duties set forth before it and completing the task at hand. We will continue to work in the best interests of the City of Beach Grove, the citizens, and the business owners. The city website continues to be successful and is provided at no cost to the taxpayer. We continue to have wonderful volunteers that assist us with updating and posting. Thank you, website volunteers. We have two community-related informational pages available. Please, if you have any community events that you would like posted, email those to me at dan.mccmillan@beachgrove.com. We try to get those posted the same day. You can check them out, the links listed below, the community event page and community news page. Financial reports, city debt schedules, bank statements, and more are available online at www.beachgrove.com. The account balances for the bank accounts are attached to this report and are also online. Thank you, Dan McMillan.
Questions or comments for the clerk?
Yeah. Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
That $10,000 that we don't have, what was that all about?
That was an investigation of the Clerk Treasurer's Office.
And we spent $10,000, we took $10,000 that we don't have, who authorized this?
You did.
You did.
No, I didn't.
Vote for it.
I don't know, and I don't know that $10,000 is the final amount. That's the amount I've received in my office to date.
We gotta pay that.
Yeah, you got no choice but pay it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the clerk? Now we'll move on to compliance. Derek? Counselors, you should have a copy of the compliance report.
Good evening. Derek Weiss, Compliance Officer, City Beach Grove. For the month of July, we had a pretty busy month. We inspected 138 addresses that we found to have violations. Of those, 27 had multiple violations. After the first inspection, 50 addresses already corrected all their problems, and another 64 are waiting on their first reinspection. We have 21 addresses that are waiting their second reinspection, and during the month of July, we only issued a total of two court summonses. It's a pretty big drop from the previous month, so a lot of people are correcting their problems. In all, we did a total of 238 inspections for the month of July. We only removed 12 signs from the city right away this month. We think that's due to our persistent enforcement. Also, we're contacting those people placing those signs up, the rent-to-own or get healthcare cheap type signs, letting them know the city ordinance, and frankly, they're not wasting their time putting them up anymore. So hopefully, we're going to see that stop and keep the city looking nice. In addition, we had 24 cars that were reported to the police department for being in violation of various ordinances. Any questions for me from the council?
Yes, if I have a question about a compliance issue, or if I think Dave's house needs to be inspected, what do I need to do to get ahold of you so that everybody knows how they can?
Sure. We've got a couple of different ways. You can contact us by phone. Our number is 803-9099. Usually, we're not in the office, we're out in the city. So leave us a voicemail, and we check it, and we'll try to get back to you within a day. You can also email us. The email address is compliance@beachgrove.com. Or the third option, we go to the mayor's action center on the beachgrove.com website, fill out the small form, and we'll get it that way. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Derek, what's the worst, I don't want it, addresses or names, but the worst one for the month of July?
The month of July is probably an issue we're currently working on. There's an address which I will best say that there's a salvage yard established in the backyard of this residence. That's the easiest way to put it. That's still a work in progress.
And the feedback from people that you speak with?
Vast majority are very happy, including the people that we have given notices to. Usually, they thank me if I see them directly. If I happen to come across the person, they're outside, or they're home when I'm giving their notice, they will thank me for bringing it to their attention. Often, they apologize. Most of our phone calls now actually aren't complaints about residents, it's people calling up, asking us to come out and look at their house, and making sure everything's fine. Where they've gotten a notice in the past, and they want to make sure everything's in compliance because they want their neighborhood looking good. Everything's very, very positive. Only once in a great moon do we hear something negative.
Questions for Derek? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that from the Beach Grove Fire Department?
Yeah, it's for that ordinance, that new ordinance. Council will move to unfinished business, carry it over from the previous meeting. General Ordinance Number 3, 2014, is up for third and final reading tonight. And at this time, I'll ask for motion to waive the rules to read by title only.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 3 by title only, please.
General Ordinance Number 3, 2014, is an ordinance amending Chapter 90 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana pursuant to animals.
All right. General Ordinance Number 3, 2014, is up for third and final reading. This time, I'll ask for motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Yes, it's fine. There you go. Please sign your vote, please. This time, I'll ask for motion to waive the rules to read by title only. Make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. At this time, I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 8, 2014, by title only, please.
General Ordinance Number 8, 2014, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 103 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove.
Thank you. General Ordinance Number 8, 2014, is up for third and final reading this evening. This time, I'll ask for motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please sign your vote.
During this downtime, do you want to give them a brief summary as of what we just passed?
Great, this one is the fair housing ordinance?
Just a 10-second.
This is something that we need to have in place so we can get federal funding.
And it's fair housing.
The reason we're passing it through so fast is we've read it several times. I don't want anybody to know what we're doing up there. We're not rubber stamping.
We've all read it.
Almost every municipality has a fair housing. It's also covered, there's a federal statute that also addresses fair housing. Every municipality has one. Again, it's a precursor for any type of federal funding in the city. It's one of the things they look for. Thank you.
Council, General Ordinance Number 9, 2014, is up for third and final reading. This time, I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance in its entirety, please.
General Ordinance Number 9, 2014, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 35 of the City of Beach Grove Code of Ordinances pursuant to the Parks Department. Whereas the Parks Board prepares and submits an annual budget to city for approval, and whereas the Board of Parks and Recreation can expect subsidies pursuant to local ordinances for the operation of the park system, and whereas the Parks Director shall oversee the daily operation of the Parks Department and report monthly to the Board of Parks and Recreation, and whereas the city has authorized the installation of telephone tower at Hartman Field, and the city generates monthly revenue from the tower. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires that revenue generated from the telephone tower located at Hartman Field be deposited into a non-reverting fund pursuant to the Department of Parks and Recreation to enhance the conditions of the parks. Now therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 35 of the Code of Ordinances to read as such. Section 35.015, Department of Parks and Recreation funding, add the following. C, the Clerk Treasurer establishes a non-reverting fund for capital improvements pursuant to the Department of Parks and Recreation. D, revenues generated from the telephone tower located at Hartman Field shall be deposited into the Department of Parks and Recreation non-reverting fund shall be used for capital improvements only. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council sees fit to amend Chapter 35 of the Code of Ordinances. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to amending Chapter 35 of the Code of Ordinances and no other ordinance. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the Clerk Treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, clerk. General Ordinance Number 9, 2014, is up for third and final reading this evening. Ask for motion to approve.
I'll make said motion.
Second that motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. Please sign your vote. General Ordinance Number 10, 2014, is up for second reading only this evening. This time, I'll ask the clerk to read General Ordinance Number 10 into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 10, 2014, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 35 of the City of Beach Grove Code of Ordinances pursuant to fees charged by the City of Beach Grove's Board of Zoning Appeals. Whereas the City of Beach Grove utilizes its own Board of Zoning Appeals, and whereas the Board of Zoning Appeals hears requests concerning variances from normal use, and whereas the Board of Zoning Appeals has established fees for filing variances, and should not depend on tax dollars for funding, and whereas it is desired that the Board of Zoning Appeals become self-sufficient by adjusting the fees for services rendered. Therefore, be it ordained that the common council, based on a recommendation from the Board of Zoning Appeals, desires to adjust the filing fee for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires to adjust the fees to the amounts listed below. Add section 35.067, filing fees, in order to compensate for the expense of conducting normal business as a Board of Zoning Appeals, the following fees shall be paid by the applicant at the time of filing. A, variance of a use for a dwelling, $150 plus $10 for each variance of development standards requested. Commercial industrial use, $500 plus $50 for each variance of development standard requested. B, all other uses, $400 plus $50 for each variance of development standards requested. C, variance of development standards of the dwelling district zoning ordinance, $150 plus $10 for each additional variance of development standards requested. Sign regulations, $250 plus $50 for each additional variance of development standards requested. Commercial, industrial, and all other zoning ordinances, $500 plus $50 for each additional variance. D, administrative fees.
Do you have yours? Or do you have a different one?
Oh, a different one.
Regroup on page two.
A, variance of a use for a dwelling use, $150 plus $10 for each variance of development standards requested. Commercial industrial use, $500 plus $50 for each variance of development standards requested. B, all other uses, $400 plus $50 for each variance of development standards requested. C, administrative fees. Administrative fees, $150, filing, processing, general review, advertising. Refunds, all variance administrative fees are non-refundable. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend the City of Beach Grove's Code of Ordinances concerning fees for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Chapter 35 of the City of Beach Grove Code of Ordinances. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the Clerk Treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Ask for motion to approve General Ordinance Number 10, 2014, on second reading only.
I'll make that motion as long as we can strike all the misinformation that was read off page two with the correct information. As long as everybody knows on the record, we have it correct. I'll make said motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on third and final reading at the next council meeting. General Ordinance Number 11, 2014, is up for second reading only this evening. Let me read this one.
Go right ahead.
Well, I'll read this one into the record on second reading. General Ordinance Number 11, 2014, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to through streets and stop streets. Whereas citizens who live in the area of 7th and Cleveland are concerned about vehicles speeding south on 7th from Bethel Avenue without stopping, and whereas currently traffic stops on Cleveland but does not stop on 7th, and whereas children regularly play in this area may be at risk because of high traffic volume. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend the traffic pattern by changing the intersection of 7th and Avenue in Cleveland to a three-way stop. Now therefore, be it further ordained that the common council desires the following amendment be made. Chapter 77, Schedule 2, through streets and stop streets, add the following. Intersection 7th and Cleveland, control and description is three-way stop, southbound 7th, eastbound and westbound Cleveland. Now therefore, be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall only apply to the above mentioned intersection and shall not affect any other traffic flow. Now therefore, be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the council, signed by the council president, attested by the Clerk Treasurer, and signed by the mayor. This time, I ask for motion to approve General Ordinance Number 11, 2014, on second reading only.
I'll make said motion.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear it on third and final reading at the next meeting. General Ordinance Number 12, 2014, is up for second reading only this evening. General Ordinance Number 12, 2014, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 77 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove pursuant to through streets and stop streets. Whereas within the last six months, a traffic accident resulting in loss of life occurred at this intersection, and whereas within the last year, another serious accident occurred resulting in property damage to at least one parked vehicle on Main Street, and whereas over 90 citizens residing close to this intersection have come together and signed a petition asking that the city convert the intersection- a petition asking that the city convert the intersection of Tyson and Main Street into a four-way stop for their personal safety and to slow down vehicular traffic. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend the traffic pattern by changing the intersection of Tyson and Main Street from a two-way stop to a four-way stop. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires that following amendment be made. Chapter 77, Schedule 2, Through Streets and Stop Streets. Three, All Streets from 17th West. Amend the following intersection. Tyson and Main Street, control and description is from two-way stop northbound and southbound Tyson to Tyson and Main Street to four-way stop westbound and eastbound Main Street, northbound and southbound Tyson. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires to amend Chapter 17 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall only apply to the above mentioned intersection and shall not affect any other traffic flow. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect 60 days after passage by the council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor. This time I ask for a motion to approve.
I'd actually like to say something before.
Okay.
I just want to remind the council that we have this petition over here of over 100 citizens that live right in that area. And I'd also like to say that Representative Cindy Kirkoffer contacted me as well about this, about the number of people that's contacted her office as well.
As for motion to approve, or recommendation to approve General Ordinance Number 12, on second reading only.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
We will hear this. Okay. We will hear this on third and final reading at the next meeting. Thank you. That concludes unfinished business. Under new business, we have five items. The first one is Resolution Number 6, 2014, pursuant to Clean Air. And I'll ask the clerk to read it into the record, please.
Resolution Number 6, 2014, is a resolution from the Common Council of the City of Beach Grove to the Indianapolis Power and Light Company concerning the coal burning facility located west of the City of Beach Grove, whereas the City of Beach Grove is moving towards recognition as a clean community, and whereas all of us must become better stewards of the environment by producing less pollutants, and whereas Indianapolis Power and Light is preparing a 20-year energy, excuse me, a 20-year energy plan that must be submitted to the I U R C by November 1st, 2014, and whereas Beach Grove residents want improved options for generating their own electricity, and desires that Indianapolis Power and Light Company to improve its energy efficiency. Now therefore be it ordained that the Common Council of the City of Beach Grove supports a clean, renewable energy vision for its city and surrounding community. Now therefore be it further ordained that the Common Council of the City of Beach Grove desires the following be submitted to Indianapolis Power and Light concerning the environment. Beach Grove residents want improved options for generating their own electricity, and ask that Indianapolis Power and Light Company improve its emission release and reduce to potential introduction of pollutants into the air or waterways and streams. Now therefore be it ordained that this resolution be sent to Indianapolis Power and Light Company. Now therefore be it further ordained that this resolution be sent to Indianapolis Power and Light immediately upon passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Floor is open for questions or comments.
I'd like to say something. Can you come up there? Is the floor open for questions or comments?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what you said.
For us. Council have questions or comments concerning the resolution? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 6, 2014.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign.
Aye.
We will get a signature sheet to you for a signature.
Resolution 6.
Thank you. Additional appropriation is next on the new business. Additional appropriation for the Police Department, and I will ask the clerk to read it into the record, please.
Additional appropriation ordinance where it has been determined that is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget. Now therefore, Section 1 be it ordained by the Beach Grove City Council of Beach Grove Civil City, Marion County, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated, transferred or reduced out of their funds named and for the purpose specified subject to the laws governing the same. Law enforcement, continuing education, other services, $5,000. That's the amount requested, the amount appropriated, $5,000.
Thank you, Dan. Chief, could you brief the council on this additional appropriation and the reason you requested it, please?
The appropriation is for a continuing education fund. The fund pays for schools, training that the officers go to. We even use it for bullets that aren't appropriated in our budget. Just anything to do with training is what this is for. $14,000 doesn't cover what our training costs are. Just the cost of schooling has gone up, and ammunition has gone up.
Questions for the chief?
I think, Dan, you want to talk briefly about the 2,000 budget?
Right. Originally, in the 2015 budget, we budgeted $30,000 instead of the 14, which has been done the last two years. Last year, we had to do a $5,000 additional for it. This year, we're doing $5,000 additional appropriation for it. Next year, it's going to go up to $25,000 because he's taken $5,000 of it this year. In this fund, at the present time, we have approximately $42,500. So there's plenty of money in there. It's just they cannot spend it because it was not budgeted unless the additional appropriation is done.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the chief? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the additional appropriation ordinance on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, chief.
Those opposed, the same sign. Council, we will hear this on second and third reading the next meeting. This is a rare event, and this is how Jeff Peters lined it up for us. So we will hear it on second and third reading at the next meeting. Thank you very much. Next item is General Ordinance Number 13, 2014, and at this time I'll ask the clerk to read the ordinance into the record, please.
General Ordinance Number 13, 2014, is an ordinance that amends Chapter 34, Section 34.15B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, pursuant to ambulance responses outside the corporate city limits of the City of Beach Grove. Whereas, Section 34.15B of the Beach Grove Code of Ordinances defines rate fees for emergency ambulance service provided by the City of Beach Grove and its fire department, and whereas more and more our ambulances are being dispatched out of our city to provide basic and advanced life support services causing distress on our employees, equipment, and vehicles, and whereas more and more revenues must be generated other than property taxes to help offset the costs associated with provided basic and life-saving services such as ambulance service, and whereas currently provisions call for a difference in fees depending on where the response may be located. Now therefore be it ordained that the Common Council of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana, desires to amend Chapter 34, Section 34.15, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana. Now therefore be it further ordained that the Common Council of the City of Beach Grove amends Chapter 34, Section 34.15B to read as follows. B. The following rate schedules established for emergency ambulance service provided by the Beach Grove Fire Department for in-city responses. Service: Basic life support rate is $700, advanced life support $900, advanced life support Level 2 $1100, signature of release $65, water rescue $400, mileage $16 per loaded mile, hazardous material response $400 for first hour, $25 every 15 minutes after the first hour. Delete: Out-of-city responses. Basic life support $11, basic life support $1,353, advanced life support $1,628, advanced life support 2 $1,947, loaded mileage $28. Add the following. Response outside the City of Beach Grove corporate limits, mileage 3328 per loaded mile. ALS non-emergency transport $1,344, ALS Level 1 emergency transport $1,969, ALS Level 2 emergency transport $235587, BLS non-emergency transport $1,104, BLS emergency transport $1,637. Be it further ordained that the common council finds it just to amend Chapter 34, Section 34.15B of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Beach Grove, Indiana. Be it further ordained that all ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith are hereby repealed. Be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect on January 1st, 2015, after passage by the common council, signed by the council president, attested by the clerk treasurer, and signed by the mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Before I open the floor up for comments, I'll have the chief comment on this. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What this does, this keeps the scheduled rate for in-city responses the same, and what it does is increases the rate for outside city responses to the county rate, which would EMS best charge throughout the county. So what we did was we brought our outside of city responses to the county rate.
And I have given one of these to each council member. Can you go through the ZIP code breakdown, please?
Yeah, I apologize.
No, you're fine. This is pretty relevant.
If you take a look at the instant ZIP code breakdown that our ambulances do respond, we respond to 30% of our calls in the 46107 ZIP code, which is primarily Beach Grove. If you take a look at the outside city responses, 46203 is 40%, and as it goes through, you look, and we are running a lot of our ambulance calls on the northwest side of the City of Beach Grove. Also, we cover a lot of area towards the Franklin Township section town, so the majority of our calls are outside the primary ZIP code of City of Beach Grove proper. So this will help increase our revenue for the ambulance.
This time I'll open the floor up. Council, questions or comments?
Yeah, where's 37018 ZIP code?
AJ, do you know?
What is it?
37018. Is that like West Virginia?
Probably. We have two families that have moved from out east that they call pretty often. They have a feature ID.
They could be traveling through, so it just generates on the report.
Oh, okay.
We go to a lot of hotels. You can remember that, too.
I just thought I'd like to be on that ambulance run.
Chief, I want to make sure we're clear that the citizens of Beach Grove are not seeing an increase in the ambulance bill.
That's correct. It stays at the current rates for the citizens of Beach Grove.
It only affects the people that do not live in the City of Beach Grove.
Yes, that is correct.
Now, if the City of Indianapolis, if their ambulance comes into Beach Grove, what rates are they going to be charged?
They're charged the county rates.
So we want to even up the playing field.
It's a standard practice.
Absolutely.
And the ZIP code summary breakdown of total runs is staggering, and this is exactly why I think we should run two ambulances all the time. We have made 2,322 runs in seven months. That is unconscionable. And it's wear and tear on these vehicles. Everything goes up. So hopefully we'll address that. Any other comments or questions from council members? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve General Ordinance Number 13, 2014, on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second reading only at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
Chief? Thank you.
Thank you, council. General Ordinance Number 14, 2014, is an update to the Personnel Manual, Article 14, Concerning Employee Behavior. Greg, did you want to? Okay. Want me to read it, or do you want to read it?
Go.
General Ordinance Number 14, 2014, is an ordinance that amends the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual, Article 14, Concerning Employee Behavior, whereas the City of Beach Grove strives to be a good employer with good working conditions, and whereas department heads and employees who are in supervisory roles have an obligation to ensure a productive workplace, and whereas employees expect fair treatment from supervisors and other employees when disagreements occur, and whereas the City of Beach Grove must strive to continue to educate employees and promote a healthy environment free of distractions for employees. Now therefore be it ordained that the common council desires Article, to amend Article 14 of the City of Beach Grove Employment Manual. Now therefore be it further ordained that the common council desires that the following sections be added to Article 14. Article 14, Employee Behavior, add the following sections. Section 11, Equal Employment Opportunity. The City of Beach Grove provides equal employment opportunities to all employees and applicants for employment without regard to race, color, religion, gender, sexual orientation, national origin, age, disability, genetic information, marital status, amnesty, or status as a covered veteran in accordance with federal, state, and local laws. The city must comply with applicable state and local laws governing nondiscrimination in employment. This section applies to all terms and conditions of employment, including but not limited to hiring, placement, promotion, termination, layoff, recall, transfer, leave of absence, compensation, and training. Each elected appointed official and employee has the responsibility to carry out this policy within the scope of his or her position. Employees who feel that their equal employment rights have been violated should contact their respective department head, city attorney, and/or mayor. Employees may raise concerns and make reports or raise complaints without fear of retaliation. A prompt and thorough investigation will be conducted, and corrective action will be taken as appropriate. Section 12, Anti-Harassment. The City of Beach Grove intends to provide a working environment that is pleasant, comfortable, and free of intimidation, hostility, or other offenses that may, that might interfere with work performance, harassment of any sort, verbal, physical, or visual, and visual. Will not be tolerated. Harassment can take many forms. It may be, but is not limited to words, signs, jokes, pranks, intimidation, physical contact, or violence. Sexual harassing conduct may include unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors, or any other verbal or physical contact of a sexual nature that prevents an individual from effectively performing the duties of his or her position, or creates an intimidating hostile or a hostile, or offensive work environment, or when such conduct is made a condition of employment or compensation either implicitly or explicitly. All city employees, supervisors, department heads, appointed and elected officials have a responsibility for keeping the work environment free of harassment. Any employee who becomes aware of an incident of harassment, whether by witnessing the incident or being told of it, must report it to his or her supervisor, immediate supervisor, department head, city attorney, or the mayor. Once the immediate supervisor, department head, city attorney, or mayor becomes aware that harassment may exist, is obligated to take prompt and appropriate action. All reports will be promptly investigated with due regard for the privacy of everyone involved. Any employee found to have engaged in harassment will be subject to disciplinary action, including but not limited to termination of employment. The City will also take an additional action necessary to appropriately remedy the situation. No adverse employment action will be taken for any employee making a good faith report or complaint of alleged harassment. Now therefore be it ordained that the Common Council desires to amend Article Fourteen of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall only pertain to the above listed amendment for Article Fourteen of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual. Now therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect immediately upon passage by the Common Council, signed by the Council President, attested by the Clerk Treasurer, and signed by the Mayor. And before I open it up for question or comments, I'll defer to City Legal for review.
Yeah, this is a precursor to hopefully the employee handbook that we're going to redo here later in the year, and it's a sound policy to have a, an EEO policy and an anti-harassment policy in place, so.
Now, Council, do we currently have anything on the books pursuant to this matter?
We do not.
So we have been a city for ever and three days, and there has been nothing fought forward that protects employees?
Correct.
This is action that needs to be taken, Council, and the sooner you take this action, the better off all of us are. I will say at this time, there is no pending action on any employee of the City of Beach Grove. This is not done for that reason. It's done in the best interest of the employees in the future. I'll open the floor up for questions or comments.
I motion we accept General Ordinance Number Fourteen, Two Thousand Fourteen on first reading only.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second reading at the next council meeting. Thank you very much. General Ordinance Number Fifteen, Two Thousand and Fourteen is the final ordinance this evening. I'll defer to the clerk. I'm losing my voice. Yeah. General Ordinance Number Fifteen, Twenty Fourteen is an ordinance that amends Article Ten of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual concerning military leave. Whereas the City of Beach Grove does hire veterans and supports employees who are in the National Guard or Military Reserve, and whereas employees given direct orders to report shall report as such with the support of the City of Beach Grove, and whereas the City feels it is important to maintain benefits to those who proudly serve while under the scope of employment with the City of Beach Grove. Now therefore be it ordained that the Common Council desires to amend Article Ten of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual concerning military leave. Now therefore be it further ordained that the Common Council desires that the following amendments be included. Section Six, Military Leave. Delete in its entirety. Replace with the following. Section Six, Military Leave. Employees called by any branch of the Armed Forces of the United States shall, when ordered to activate service, be entitled to a leave of absence for such a period of time that the member serves in such capacity and shall discharge therefrom. Permanent full-time employees who serve in the Military Reserve or National Guard shall make every attempt to advise their respective department head of their upcoming annual two-week training obligation and monthly weekend drills prior to the end of January so that may be documented for planning. Time off for military drill weekend or trainings ordered by the military will not be paid by the City of Beach Grove. Military weekend or training drills that follow normally scheduled shifts will be excused, and the individual's employee's attendance record shall reflect such action. Employees may request time off for travel and/or rest periods up to eight hours before or after a drill weekend. This time is unpaid and must be recorded in the respective employee's attendance record. Employees cannot use sick time for coverage. Military orders for two-week camps or deployments will be excused at the request of the employee. The City of Beach Grove shall not pay the employee for this expense. Arrangements shall be made at least thirty days in advance with the respective department head, and a copy of such orders must be submitted. Long-term deployments will be excused but are not paid. Employees shall not lose any benefits or seniority as a result of a deployment. Nothing in this ordinance shall be contradictory to any federal or state law concerning protected leave for employees who serve in the National Guard or Military Reserve. Therefore be it ordained that the Common Council desires that Article Ten of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual be amended as such. Therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance only applies to Article Ten of the City of Beach Grove Personnel Manual. Therefore be it further ordained that this ordinance shall go into effect sixty days after passage by the Common Council, signed by the Council President, attested by the Clerk Treasurer, and signed by the Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk.
Before I open this up, I'll defer to, to Council for a review of this article because when I approached him about it, I was very, very unsure of how soldiers should be compensated and if we were doing it right or not, so.
Yeah, I think the original proposal was is that we would compensate employees while they were on leave, but under the, well, we clearly don't. If somebody wants to use their vacation time, they're permitted to do that, but they're also compensated by the military. So at least the way I understood what we were doing before is somebody could essentially be paid by the city while they're on leave and then also be paid by the military, so I, I think that, that corrects us. As some of you know, the, there's a federal statute, it's the U.S.E.R.R.A. statute, U.S. E.R.R.A., if you were to Google it, and that's a federal statute that says you can't discriminate against somebody or subject to retaliation. They go on a military or based on their military status. So clearly that's not the case here, and in fact, I can put a provision here that this could not be in contradiction to any federal or state law. Indiana also has a failing military leave act that's also somewhat related to this, where milit, military families can seek leave through their employment. The City's certainly subject to that. The thirty-day provision, Councilor Davidson just mentioned that. I think maybe essentially you say, or this provision like you say, usually you have to give, if the, if the, if the leave is foreseeable, so in other words, if you have drill the same two weeks out every year, usually you gotta give a thirty-day notice if it's foreseeable. Now, obviously, sometimes it's not foreseeable. It's like an F in L.A., right? You get sick, you can't get the thirty-day notice. So maybe I'll look into that a little bit more, whether maybe we cure that by putting thirty days if foreseeable, but that, that will probably cure that, but I think it's under the federal, so that's my take.
All right, floor is open for question or comments.
There is actually one more problem that I seen in here is that we must produce a, I'm sorry, I say we because I am an Air Force service, and it's, it is nice to see this on the books, but the fact that we must produce a orders to the employer, that is something that I would, I would ask Craig also to look at.
I'll be happy to do that.
But I'll be happy to pass it on first reading to get it going.
Any other questions or comments from council members? If not, I'll ask for motion to approve General Ordinance Number Fifteen, Two Thousand Fourteen on first reading only.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. We will hear this on second reading at the next council meeting. Thank you. That concludes new business this evening. Council comments beginning on my far right. Dave?
Yeah, I just want to ask the city attorney there a couple of questions about an article in the newspaper where you made the statement that you will not bill the city for time against Dan, and, and then Dan says you sent a bill for twenty-five hundred dollars for the time spent investigating, then you said that the actual was only eight hundred and thirty-two dollars?
That's correct. Three point two hours.
But you said you wouldn't bill the city for it.
No, you got that wrong, Dave.
No, no, I got the paper right here.
All right, you missed reading the paper. I think what the premise was is that the clerk had said that I had spent twenty-five hundred dollars in addition to what the outside firm spent. That's clearly not the case. It's three point two hours. Anytime that City Legal spends to, on, on the, on the suit filed against a clerk, I'm not billing my time. So I think there, there's a, there's a disconnection there on your, on, on your part. So I hope that clears it up.
Well, here's the paper, and you can read it, but I know what it says.
Okay, well, you're, you're reading it wrong, Dave.
I, I don't know how I could possibly.
Why don't you read it into the record, Dave?
Do what, sir?
Read it into the record.
What'd he say?
Read it into the record. He would like for you to read that.
Oh, okay. Wiley, the city attorney said he will not bill the city for his time spent on the lawsuit against Dan.
Okay, that's right. And that's exactly what I promised to do, and that's exactly what I will do.
But what's the eight hundred and thirty-two dollars then?
That was as a result of being kept apprised by the outside counsel in the status of the investigation.
Okay.
Anything else, Dave?
No.
Okay, John?
I know there are several people here that want to talk about the bill for the chickens, and I'm sorry it wasn't on this evening's agenda, so we will get to that, and I, I do hope that it passes as amended, which I will amend, and I just saw you saying this, I knew that's why you were here. On a personal note, school's back in. Be careful when you're driving. Watch out for my kids. Sports are getting ready to start up. Girls volleyball team starts in two weeks. Again, as I, as I said so many times over the last seven years, go support your local teenagers. They will make you proud. All you read is the crap that Air By Reads. Go watch them. We've got great kids here in Beach Grove. It'll, it'll, it'll warm your heart to go watch these kids doing their best. Other than that, I want to make sure we know about the Arbor Day program, the concert in the park, lots of things going on in the city. The more we see each other, the better off we are. Thank you for all coming, and some of you have to come back so we can talk about next week or next month's ordinances. Thank you.
Yeah, I was really entranced in that. I agree with John on the youth. I, I think it's a great thing, and I won't comment on Anthony's boy tonight, I promise, but I will let him. We went to Seymour over the weekend, and it was a nice tournament these seven, eight-year-olds got into, and I'll let him go from there. But I would like to say one thing to, is he still Mr. Latimer? And John Morgan? You know, you guys thank a lot of people, and I think that's what's great, how the city does work together with things like that. I think we should do better at that, and from the promoter's point, I'll tell you what, that was the best fireworks I've ever seen.
Thank you.
Don't forget the fall festival.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
I agree with Dave. I've had several people say that it was the best show ever, but then I also hear that every year, so you guys are, you guys really have hard work to do next year outdoing yourself again.
Thank you.
Also, to, back on what Dave said, not only the seven and eight-year-olds, we had a, we had a tournament in Seymour, which is explained why I did not use sunscreen this, this weekend, but we were out there all weekend for at least six, seven hours Saturday, six, seven hours on Sunday. Our boys, we won the first game against Pekin Eastern All-Stars, but couldn't get past Greensburg, but our boys did it, did a, a good job, you know, for seven-year-olds, just amazed. I mean, I'm sure I didn't have the talent, you know, at that age, but, but not only seven-year-olds, but all of our All-Star team, we should do a, a, a big appreciation to all the volunteers and coaches that helped make this Little League year a great one. That's it.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all for coming and for all the organizations. Thanks for the great work that you guys put in. I know the community appreciates it. Thank you once more, Beauty Five Beach Grove, for the flags. That'd be great. That's it.
Thanks, and I'll defer to the clerk for a couple of announcers. National Night Out in support of the Police Department will be August the fifth, twenty fourteen, from six to nine P.M. at the Moose Lodge at thirty-three twenty South Emerson Avenue. It's a great night to get to know your neighbors, join over thirty-seven million people in sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-four communities worldwide to celebrate America's National Night Out Against Crime. And then the second thing is a letter from the Indiana Department of Transportation. Dear Interested Citizens, Local Residents, and/or Elected Officials, the Indiana Department of Transportation, N.D., would like to cordially invite you to a public information meeting regarding the interchange modifications and reconstruction project at I-65 and I-465 on the southeast side of Indianapolis, Marion County. This project is part of Operation Indy Commute. The purpose of this meeting is to provide residents and project stakeholders with an update regarding construction-related activities for the project, including noise wall placement. N.D. last met with the community in October of twenty twelve, and since that time, additional evaluation and study have taken place in regards to noise mitigation measures. N.D. has approved an updated noise impact analysis report dated June fourth, twenty fourteen, which may be viewed by visiting the project webpage at www.indicommute.in.in.gov. Public meeting in open house will take place Thursday, August the fourteenth, twenty fourteen, at five P.M. informal open house session, six P.M. for formal presentation. This will take place at South Grove Intermediate School, eight fifty-one South Ninth Avenue in Beach Grove.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, no other comments from council members? I will ask for motion to adjourn.
I'll make said motion.
Second.
We will be adjourned. Our next meeting is going to be Tuesday, September the second, instead of Monday. Monday's Labor Day, so we'll convene here at seven P.M. on Tuesday, September the second. Thank you.